It is a game.
Right, everyone. Tonight is the...
Oh, they're hugging each other, they hit the bases.
Tonight's Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, July 20th. Twenty-two at 7:00 PM. Town Hall, Rose Room. Everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have number two visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Visitors?
Douglas Elliott, I'm here.
For an appointment.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a lot of questions for you, so get ready.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, no. We're tapping for the appointments, we're gonna have to talk. Could be half an hour.
Could be eight or...
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, good. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the July 6th, 2022 meeting. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
No. When do I amend? I made a mistake or a mistake... When do I amend? Is there a discussion time?
Yeah. We get a second? Do we have a second?
I didn't get a second.
Okay, discussion.
I misrepresented, I guess. I got an email from Kathy King. The Emlyn Wetmans did not... What was the word for it? Approve of the Indian River Bank Garden project. They simply gave us a date for a site walk, which was performed this past last week, and in August they will vote. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
You abstained?
I abstained.
Oh, crystal. All right. I have number four.
Appointments and reappointments. Tonight we have two appointments. Douglas Elliott for the Harvard Commission for terms until 6:30, 2026, and Jason Greenie to the Water Pollution Control Commission until 6:30, 2025. Do you have a motion to approve of both appointments?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. There it is.
And now the questions.
Very competitive. See? You didn't have to. All right. Next up, we will do the WPCC update. So we have members here that will present to us a PowerPoint presentation.
Hi, my name is Matt Kennedy. I'm the chairman of the WPCC, and tonight I have commission member Al Walker and our engineer Kristi Wagner from CDM Smith. And we're here to approach the town council with just kind of an updated overview, pretty much, because this is the first time we've had this opportunity with this group. And let's see here. We put together a few slides, really just a few, but it's just to kind of guide our overview. And the outline of the slide is essentially giving you a quick history of wastewater facilities planning in Clinton, a... Which seems just like yesterday, but 2017 wastewater facility plan that we worked on for a very long time. And just the idea of us having collaborative goals. You know, we're an appointed commission. We're part of the government, and you guys are the chief body, and a lot of the decisions, all the decisions come through you guys, and all the technical work has been done by us. You know, to talk about a few of our collaborative goals and then talk about some benefits to the town for this work and what the next steps might be. So we, to just build off of that last thing, we kind of envision this being, you know, our, like I said, an introduction to your folks and, you know, an opportunity for you to ask those questions. So wastewater facilities planning in Clinton has been going on for many decades, my whole life. So in general, this wastewater planning has recommended, you know, did in the past, many decades ago, recommended these kind of big solutions, because that's how we did things in the 60s and 70s and 80s. We did big solutions. We put big pipes in everywhere, and it was able to be done at the time. But none of these things were ever really implemented. So in the 90s, the town worked out in Centaur, with the community DEP that summarized the areas that had been hotspot areas for decades and decades and decades, and memorialized that stuff in Centaur. And both sides agreed that there was a community pollution problem in the town, and that it can be... This is an important piece that can be reasonably anticipated to occur in the future. So a lot of us would say, hey, my septic's working right now, and meanwhile, the ground water's two feet, and it's just barely kind of hanging on there. But the DEP negotiated those words with us that it can be reasonably anticipated to happen in the future. And in Centaur, required, and an engineering study was performed, to investigate these historic problem areas and to, you know, figure out what the causes were and come up with a plan forward for remediating these and, you know, supplying a plan that the town could follow going forward to, you know, come up with a sustainable solution. So the commission that I've been on for, I guess, over a decade now, built on some work of a previous group of commissioners, and eventually got together a wastewater facilities plan that was conceptually approved by DEP in 2017. DEEP in 2017. The wastewater facilities planning is one of the, it's one of the kind of legal responsibilities of a water pollution control authority, and we're legally a water pollution control authority. So this is something we had to do both for the consent order, and it's also one of our duties as, you know, this type of body that we are. This wastewater facilities plan quickly recommended wastewater collection and off-site treatment in general for several areas that you guys are probably familiar with from, you know, following this throughout the years. And those areas are downtown center, Long Hill, coastal area, and an extension of public water to Rocky Ledge. And the Rocky Ledge area is shown in blue on that map for any... I know we call it Rocky Ledge often, but it's an area that has similar issues. And the wastewater facilities plan, the other big piece of it is for onsite wastewater management for the remainder of town. With some of these areas, larger areas, which you'll see kind of in yellow on that old map, are areas that were borderline for needing sewer, but through a bunch of technical work that we performed throughout the years in the development of this plan, we were able to negotiate with the Connecticut DEEP to say that these areas with enhanced monitoring, some maintenance, and upgrades as necessary could be handled onsite and wouldn't need to be sewered or brought to a community area to be treated. So building off of that, we have three quick slides on each of the main areas in town, and I'd like our engineer Kristi Wagner to get into just a little bit of the technical stuff with you, because she knows it cold, and she's a better public speaker than I am.
How do you... Oh, sorry. So as that said, there are basically three areas of town where off-site treatment, basically sewers treatment and groundwater discharge up to the tree at that point are recommended. And then one area that we'll talk about separately, that's public water solution is recommended. I'll talk about each of the three areas recommended for off-site sewers. Real quickly, they're probably pretty familiar to you, but I want to just bring up some of the issues and the reasons why they're different than a lot of the rest of town. Starting with downtown center, obviously the most visible of all the areas that we talked about, you know, right up to the entire town. The area that we outlined with the greatest need is approximately 32 parcels. Unique challenges largely related to lot size, average one-third of an acre, and in many of these parcels, their septic systems are actually on other people's properties. They were built that way a long time ago, before anybody told them not to, but that's not the way that they should be. And there's really not room on a lot of these properties to properly put a functionable septic system with the space that's available. You know, in some cases, there are also some lower-lying soils, some poorly draining soils, but in downtown center area, it's mostly an issue of space. The WPCC is heard many times from business owners, just anecdotally, people having trouble with their systems, they need to pump out frequently, they, you know, still, even with frequent maintenance, can't quite keep up with the demands of some of the water intensive businesses. So it's, this is an area that's, you know, of economic value, both for existing development as well as for any potential future growth there. So what's recommended here is basically a small little collection system and a treatment facility somewhere nearby, and then groundwater discharge. So instead of discharging treated flow to a river, discharging it right into the ground, which actually allows for extra treatment and time in the ground, to one or both of the two areas that are roughly highlighted on this plan. We've done some preliminary investigations on both of them. If you add them together, they certainly have more capacity than either one of them separate. So that's why they've both been identified as potential solution areas for this little area of downtown. Any questions on that, Town Councilor?
Where are those two areas?
Yeah, so the yellow, just for reference, I should have said this. The yellow one is basically behind the Chips Pub Plaza, and the green one, if you can see on the right side, there's Indian River. So it's kind of the higher part of the parking lot that's behind Coffee Break, basically.
And Kristi, can you freshen my memory? How many gallons per day are you talking about for the whole area?
The whole area, in the range of 10,000 gallons per day. I will say that that is based on the water usage data that we had from several years ago. Everything should be updated, but it's approximately 10,000 gallons per day in the downtown area. Coastal area, another very vital area for the town. You'll see on this map, only portion of the coastal area is outlined in red. There is a portion with kind of the western end of Shore Road that's a little bit higher up, has bigger parcels that can actually handle onsite septic, and don't really need an off-site solution there. But a lot of it with the smaller parcels, the low-lying, high groundwater, shallow depths of groundwater, immediate proximity to Long Island Sound. A lot of these parcels have severe damage during some of the prior storms, exposed septic tanks, exposed leach fields, things like that. So it's a very vulnerable area. We whittled it down to about 651 parcels, average of a quarter acre in size. And the reason we whittled it down was because these parcels highlighted in green up there, it's kind of just on the other side of the railroad tracks, just kind of west of the golf course, north of the railroad tracks off of Old Post Road. That is the, this closest site that we were able to identify for potential discharge to groundwater. And that site has a capacity in the range of 120,000 or 150,000 gallons per day. If we sent all of this coastal area, we would need more capacity than that. So that's why we whittled it down to just the location that it holds in need. So, and we're looking at about 100,000 or 120,000 gallons per day in need in that area with these parcels here. Questions? We're all there already. Long Hill is a different challenge. About 378 parcels, about a half an acre in size on average. They're a little bit bigger, but they're extremely rocky, very dead soils, just do not drain well. High groundwater in some areas, a history of marginal septic upgrades, people talking about surges overflow, just seeing untreated septic in their backyard or running down the street after a storm event. So, you know, again, bigger lots, but really poor soils. This one is a tough one for us to be. Treatment and groundwater recharge site is a site that was identified decades ago off of Pleasant Valley Road. It's a site that the town has not been able to fully access in recent years due to some cooperation issues with the property owner, which is another topic for another day. But we do have a potential site that has, appears to have more than enough capacity to handle the flow from this area, but this is one that has some implementation challenges for sure. The backup site possibly at the Elliott School, which also comes with different challenges, but we have a couple of options for this area. So those are the three areas of town that have kind of the worst wastewater needs, so the downtown center, coastal, and Long Hill. Questions on this? Yep, Rocky Ledge. So Rocky Ledge is a little bit different. 122 parcels, decent sized lots, about .4 acres. Kind of a mix of soils. Pretty compact, some land, some high groundwater, but the issue here, or I think I almost thought of it the same name, I don't know. Currently, they do not have public water here. We did some analysis and determined that if the wells are removed from these properties, and you don't need to have a well protection radius around them, since these lots are a little bit bigger and the soils aren't terrible, you could do reasonable septic upgrades on each of these properties to, you know, to alleviate the septic concern if public water is provided. So basically if a water main extension is provided. I know all these projects are big, but this is really good news, because a water main extension onto these streets is far less expensive than a sewer and a treatment plant, and there was no good location around here to send the treated wastewater in this case. So this one, I guess there's details on this line. You know, water testing confirms more than half the lots have confirmed water quality violations or public health code exceptions. You know, confirmed from the data that we had, we didn't update that on every property. So again, in this case, if we can get public water up there, the septic's can stay and be upgraded on these lots and provide a substantial improvement in public health in this area. So this one, actually several years ago, went as far as design of the water main on each of these streets. So it's a water main extension up Route 81, and then also kind of interconnecting with the water main from my school. And then we also did a design of the water mains on each of these streets from Rocky Ledge Drive down to Happy Acres Road, all the areas outlined in red on this map. It was not funded. There were some questions with Connecticut Water Company, how much they could fund, how much did the town pay. There were also a lot of implementation challenges raised about how to get people to connect. Should the town just pay for everything to get people to connect to solve the problem? It's not typical, but it is something I've done. And, you know, if it's not done, how do you compel people to connect? So that's, this one hasn't moved forward in a while. I think it's been a couple of years at least since anyone communicated with Connecticut Water, which is now not Connecticut Water anymore. So, again, implementation challenges associated with this, but this is a fairly straightforward solution for the Rocky Ledge area, and we can get past some of those. Questions on that? How much you have, Matt? So as Matt mentioned, the facilities plan that was conceptually approved by Connecticut DEEP in 2017 had some conditions. Of course, it's basically conditions associated with furthering the program. There's some additional capacity testing that's required on those sites in the downtown center, related to preliminary investigations on those. The SEVA Environmental Impact Evaluation Process. SEVA is the Connecticut Environmental Policy Act. It's basically a public scoping process for, you know, a public comment period. That has to happen, but it can't happen until there's kind of an implementation plan and how, you know, how would the town go about pursuing and funding a project like this. Property acquisition issues that I mentioned before. We've identified all these parcels. At the time the work was done, they were all theoretically available and empty. I'm not, I think there's one, the old was one, I'm not, there was talk of them doing something else with it. So, you know, all of these things might have to be revisited, and the town has not actually acquired any of these parcels at this time. But in general, you know, in 2017, Connecticut DEEP required that the town make good faith proactive efforts to implement the proposed solutions, including the option of taking a faith approach based on cost effectiveness, feasibility, and environmental public health benefits. So I think this state understands that projects of this magnitude are big for any town, and specifically for a small town. So they've been patient, as you can tell. It's been a long time. I think that they're kind of happy whenever we keep moving something. Right now, we've got the hydraulic load testing tentatively planned for next year. It has to be a springtime thing. So that's kind of the one thing that's really on the radar, that it would be a tangible, another checkbox we can hit. But really, we're going to hit a point where, you know, we need to talk about large scale, how would the town start to implement this and get past some of these challenges.
How do hydraulic load testing take?
Uh, this is when you basically put trenches on the property, you can pump water in.
Which property you're on?
This would be the downtown center properties, ideally both of them. So we try and pump in 5,000 to 10,000 gallons a day, give actual measurements of what happens to the groundwater and when that happens. We did it at the Old Post Road parcel, probably eight years ago now, it was a while ago now. It was also done in a parcel up on Carter Hill Road around that same height range. And it kind of validates the little bits of data that you get from monitoring wells, the initial monitoring wells. So I'll send it back to Matt for this, unless you want me to keep going.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I touched upon this. You know, as Kristi pointed out, you know, we've done a lot of work. We've spent a lot of good taxpayer money doing science and engineering and, like, really, like, kind of rolling up your sleeves type of science and engineering, a lot of it, because it was, how can we get data? It was looking through old files, old health department files, looking through property files, you know, talking to experts that, you know, from the health department that had been involved in these properties. And we got a bunch of lines of evidence that showed us that this is, this is a very, this would be a very effective way of taking care of this problem. So, you know, our collaborative goal becomes, how can we assist the town in, you know, moving forward with what I would imagine would be shared goals? You know? It's a, for many years, the WPCC was kind of a, you know, kind of a good soldiers working in the background, and then with little bits and pieces of times where the Board of Selectmen was, you know, especially interested for one reason or another. And now this is our first real chance to get to know you guys and for you to get to know us. And, you know, there's lots of questions, right? You probably have so many questions swirling around in your head, it's kind of hard to spit one out. We have thought about probably most of the questions that people will come up with so many times and throughout the years, and have worked out different scenarios. We've presented scenarios. Mary's probably heard the majority of them. She's probably the only person who's heard all of them. But it's, there's many big ones, but a phasing, you know, like, in general, this seems to be an untenably sized project, you know? So phasing is something that could be considered for, you know, completing pieces of this over a phased period of time. You don't want to phase it too long, because things get more and more expensive over the years. So there is some urgency to at least consider going through the plan, you know, quicker rather than, as my old friend Hal Dolan would say, kicking the can down the road forever because things get more and more expensive. One of those solutions we were talking about before, I think, was on the lines of a million or $3 million for the tri-town system.
Oh, back in the 70s.
Back in the 70s. Yeah, so we're talking many times that now, just for this, you know, kind of a hybrid plan here, because building giant sewer treatment plants and sewer-ing entire towns, you know, those are billion-dollar projects, you know? So this was something that took a lot of effort to get to this point, to where it looks like a, you know, we have kind of a checkerboard of problems and solutions. So financing such a project, I don't have all the answers. We've worked with the Connecticut DEEP in the past, and there are ways that communities pay for these types of things. We're familiar with them. We're conversing, you know, at subsequent meetings, we could, you know, kind of dedicate, you know, either you coming to one of our meetings or us coming to your meetings in this fashion, and, you know, tackling, you know, some of these goals here. But financing is a tough one. You know, we've met with Carl on this, you know, a few times throughout the years, and it's, it is a toughie, because we would need, there'd be a lot of skin in it for us as the people who live here. I think there should be more skin in it by the state of Connecticut, who, we have, we have a consent order with them. They should be partners in this. They're the environmental protection people, they're the public health people, and, you know, they have resources that we don't have as a small town for helping identify sources for financing. And then kind of continued dialogue and negotiations with the Connecticut DEEP. They're not breathing down our neck, but, you know, we know the problem exists. The problem has been identified by engineers throughout the decades, and working with them is always better than, you know, having the state try to, you know, bear their teeth at us, I suppose. You know, a gorilla in the room is property acquisition. This is a, if you run it back to Kristi's first, you know, discussion, this is groundwater recharge. Sewer treatment plants usually work, you flush your toilet, it disappears, and you never think about it again. But say if you were in Deep River, it goes to the Deep River Sewer Treatment Plant. It's a publicly owned treatment works. You know, stuff gets treated and then discharged the surface water. Discharging the surface water is very tricky in Clinton, because we have this protected harbor where all our rivers end up. So it's really tricky. So that's why discharging to groundwater became a very popular engineering sound idea throughout the years. So if you're going to put something in the ground, you need to acquire property with which to put that stuff. If we wait forever as those pieces start disappearing, this entire, you know, kind of well-thought-out project becomes harder and harder to pull off. So each one of those is a big conversation, you know? But we wanted to at least, you know, meet you folks and present this to you, you know, that there's, clearly, we live here, we love this town, we enjoy the benefits of this town on a daily basis, you know? Our shoreline affects us from when we're bringing our little kids to the beach when they were little, and now they aren't anymore, but, you know, to coastal resiliency, you know? We have septic systems that are in harm's way, you know, along our shoreline, and they get exposed during certain storms, and that presents a public health issue and, you know, affects the fishing and shellfish and all the things that we, that are part of our culture here in Clinton. Vitality of our downtown business district. You know, a lot of us love it the way it is. A lot of us wish that it could attract different types of other businesses to augment it and make it more of what we would like our downtown to be. A lot of that is based on how you handle your wastewater. Protection of public health and the environment, from our beaches to the water we're drinking from our wells, to the breakouts in our backyard when there's heavy rainfall. We've heard impassioned pleas from people from all throughout town regarding all these issues throughout the years coming to our meetings. And then staying ahead of DEEP enforcement, you know? I'm not especially afraid of DEEP in general, because they have their hands full, but it's an opportunity, you know, for whatever this next consent order is. We've done most of what they asked us to do in 97, but this next consent order, it should have our fingerprints on it. It should be us as a town, you folks deciding, this is what the town, the people who we represent, this is what they want, and this is how they see this affecting them in the future. So let's have whatever that next consent order is, have, you know, be something that, and I do, we've come up with, not something that becomes a popular solution that starts being doled out, you know, to cities around the state that have these similar problems. So to not belabor things much more, next steps are just kind of keeping this relationship going. You guys getting your questions together, talking about this, you know, and coming up with, you know, looking over this little pryor and, you know, kind of asking us for, you know, information that we could provide to you. Like I said, we've thought many of these things out. We've reached points where we couldn't go much further without harder decisions, you know, and kind of, you know, we need a smarter group and more, you know, a different group of people working on these. And just kind of these continued communication with DEEP and really putting some good thought into the property acquisition and phasing type issues and just kind of long-range planning as a town. And, you know, for me personally, I've been chairman for a good part of the past decade, you know, and, you know, I'm an environmental professional, geologist by trade, you know, I love what I do, I love working with the people. I've had the, you know, the pleasure of working with on this commission throughout the years, been some really great, smart people, as you guys know. It's, it's, it's wonderful to work with peers with a common goal. But, you know, the leadership of the town, um, needs to think about this like you think about any of the big things that we have to tackle in this town. Whether it's, you know, needing a high school or needing a new roof on a building or, you know, needing roads and bridges, you know, this is that type of thing. So, um, you know, we're here for you, you know? We've done a lot of engineering and we just want to, you know, get some feedback on how we can not hang our heads, but, you know, figure out a path forward that, that works for us as a town. That's what I see as the, uh, as the primary next steps. And I think that concludes our formal presentation. Carrie?
Is the downtown center load testing, uh, going to be done with ARPA money? Is that?
Correct.
Okay, great. So that's a step.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a step that we're, we're planning on completing, uh, winter and spring of this upcoming year. Obviously, there's a lot that needs to happen between now and then from both planning, engineering and, and, uh, you know, just working out the details on how it's going to be paid for. But, uh, yeah, that's a, that's something that we're really excited about. And it's going to provide a lot of data, you know? It's going to provide the hardcore data that was kind of the missing piece for, as Christie said, probably the most visible, you know, um, problem here in town. We don't hear about it much anymore, but we used to hear the complaints about people who would park behind Comcast building and, you know, coffee break and that area up there where there'd be breakouts through the, through the asphalt.
The potential solution that you have for the downtown area, that's for existing improvements and existing development?
Yeah, it's for existing development and it can-
How much more future development will, will it handle?
Well, yeah, I-
So as I mentioned, we think the downtown center at the moment has a lot. When we had the data several years ago, we were just looking like a thou- ten thousand gallons per day. The two parcels that we identified for, um, the groundwater recharge, I have the green and the yellow. I think together they're in the range of 12,000 or 13,000 gallons per day. So there is a little bit of room for expansion there. We need to validate the current flow with the current use, so that needs some ways of change. This one is, this is always a tricky topic, to be honest. The, you know, the, the consent order and DEP's goal and requirement is that the town take care of the existing pollution problems. However, where, where we can find capacity and work it in, some, you know, some growth is allowable and obviously durable for the town. That's one of the reasons we wanted to load test in there and see, you know, how much can we squeeze out, squeeze into the ground there, um, reliably.
And one of, uh, Tom, one of the interesting things about this type of a project is that a, a large portion of these types of wastewater projects can be funded by the Connecticut Clean Water Fund. And I, I think this type of a project, uh, under current rules would be 25% or is it?
Probably 30 if you're small community. Twenty, twenty to thirty depending on the project.
And that would be for what the, for what was prescribed to us, like take care of your immediate problems. But they, they've told us that there's some wiggle room in there because clearly we're sizing pipe now. You know, that's not a big deal, you know? That's not a big deal killer. So sizing the pipe a little bit bigger and, and making the systems, um, maybe potentially scalable. But that's all, um, it having these two options, you know? We're luckily, we have some good soils in the midst of an area with, you know, with really big challenges.
I have a question for you.
You know, uh, I'm new to, I've, I've never, as a town council member, heard this presentation. And when, when I've heard it talked about with the people in the town, what a lot of people say, and maybe there's, needs to be some education there, is, you know, forget about the downtown, but take Long Hill. Like, why should the town and the taxpayers have to foot the bill for individual homeowners for this problem? What, what would your answer be to that?
Clearly, that's a discussion. But, you know, we have a, we have what's identified as a community pollution problem by the definition with the state of Connecticut. And, uh, we are all that community and, you know, we bear some, some portion of, of this responsibility. Clearly, it's not something, we make decisions as the body that makes decisions for the town. So, um, to what degree each one of us is absorbing some part of this? You know, I think we all benefit from public health and from taking care of a, a black eye in our town. You know, we all benefit from it, whether we live in the neighborhood or not. You know, I don't think that's too high in the sky to say that, um, but it's, um, that is it, that's a discussion. It's a discussion that's been had with different boards of selectmen. And there are some different ways of looking at it and, uh, that does come up.
And it has a lot to do with our zoning.
Does the town approve that?
Yeah, the town did approve a lot of this stuff, so we are a little bit complicit in this, yes.
So it's the zoning. We have, um, non-conforming uses all over town. We have allowed uses in areas that don't comply with what the potential or the, um, regulated use are supposed to be. So over time, we are sort of abusing those locations and putting more pressure on the systems surrounding the soils in particular.
And the capacity that we have for this to work.
It's going back even 60 years that we've been doing this. So, um, I'm sure it's been much longer than that, but a lot of it has to do with our own zoning. So when you talk about community responsibility, it has a lot to do with that.
When did zoning even start, Carl?
19, oh gosh, I have a newspaper article. I feel like in 19-
In the seventies, right?
It's not ancient history.
Seventy-two?
Definitely not.
It was 19-
Down to procedure.
1972, I think, something like that.
Some of these residential areas were areas where, you know, a developer comes in and, you know, puts in a housing development and they take dirt from one area and move it to another dirt in order to make, you know, in order to make a, a development. In many cases, that left just enough dirt to get a septic tank covered, you know? And it, it, it functioned at the time, you know? It passed whatever approval, if there was an approval. But it, it was something that despite all of the best efforts of, of trying to keep up on these things and we've been, you know, one thing that I, probably all of you guys know, and I don't know if you know a lot about it, Chris, but we, we have this pump out ordinance in town that the town put together and was for maintaining septic systems. And it was a negotiated thing we did with the Connecticut DEP to say, okay, but what can we do in the meantime? You know, and that was to inspections and pump outs of tanks catches problems before they get super bad, you know, often. And, and sometimes easy stuff, you know, a baffle that could have caught your se- your leaching field from being full of grease or something, you know? It, it, some, some simple things. So that, that, um, having that ordinance in town has enabled us to, you know, to, to get by, you know? But, but, and just, just marginally in a lot, in a lot of areas. And these areas are really spread across the entire town. If you look at the first map, um, the first map kind of concentrates areas that are known to have the worst issues. But shallow depth of bedrock and shallow depth to, um, to groundwater and soils that don't perk well is not unique to us, you know? It's a, it's something that is shared along the shoreline. But we do have a pretty unique combination of them, you know? Which makes our town wonderful, but also, you know, makes it a, a more complex problem.
So I, I just wanted to thank you guys on WPCC and also Christie because you guys have been at it for, like you said, almost a decade. And, um, it has been, and you have meetings, special meetings, and you just dig in and it's been an internist amount of work. So I really appreciate everything you've done over the years and carrying on Hal Dalton's legacy as well. That's, that's big. I do have a question about, uh, the SEPA process. And I know we talked about it before, there's some pressure within that process that the town's going to have to acknowledge it and to move forward. And has there been conversations at the town level regarding that? What responsibility, uh, happens once we take over that process? I'm looking towards Carl.
I have no conversation to that effect. Yeah, that's, that is, conversation has not had. We've been speaking about financing of doing the testing, where we stand with initial testing, trying to get DEP's attention regarding financing and funding. We know it's part of the process, but we're just, we're not there yet in doing the SEPA.
Is there any, um, opportunity for conversations with Old Saybrook as well? Just in terms of education and how they've moved through the process? Because they have been tremendously successful to getting to the point that they are at. I mean, unfortunately, there's one area along the shoreline that is unresolved and they do not have a solution for it. But, um, otherwise they've been really successful and they have sort, I don't want to say, you could probably speak to it better than I can. But they have sort of similar circumstances where there's pockets all over town that needed to be resolved and they aggressively approached to them. And they did go out to bond for a significant amount of money to do that and then also got some additional funding through the state. But is that something that you think-
That was a big part of our life for many years was kind of following along with what they were doing and even pulling in some of their experts to come speak to us and let us know, you know, what their challenges were, you know, how they, how they overcame some of their challenges. You know, at, at first it seemed that they had the, you know, the perfect, you know, they had the perfect solution, but it wasn't the perfect solution. It never is, you know? So ours is a more perfect solution for us than, than what they did. You know, they have just a slightly different set of variables than we have. But the lessons that they learned during their project are kind of invaluable, you know? We, we, you can't put a, you can't put a dollar amount on that. So we would, um, as we, as we move forward, you know, and start getting into some of the, you know, actual project type stuff, they would, could probably be one of our best friends, you know, because they have that experience. And we know where they, we're successful, we know where they failed, you know? This, this has been front page news for, you know, a few decades here. But there's, yeah, there's a lot, a lot to be learned from those folks and a lot of, a lot of good experience. So again, they were, they were our friends at one time and I imagine they'll, they'll help us out, you know, again, as, as we move forward.
I think a big part of this for Clinton, just our town, you know, as, people always want to know what's going on. So I mean, this is a big part of this, I think, is just the community relations as well. Not just the council, but the community itself. Because like Chris says, people are going to have questions. That was always the question, how are we paying for this? Why, you know? So I mean, you know, giving them a presentation like this that you can explain to them, you know, hopefully they'll show up, but be able to explain to them, you know, this is why we need this. You know, obviously I think the number one problem is going to be the funding. I mean, that's going to be the big thing, that's going to be the question on everybody's mind. You know, so going to them and explaining to them, you know, in layman's terms, this is why and this is how we get to that point, I think would benefit as well.
One of our biggest successes, and this almost seems like ancient history now, even though it really wasn't. It was probably, you know, six, six years ago or seven years ago. But we did a public information campaign that was part of, um, you know, getting our facilities plan worked out. And we, we met with each of the needs areas. We did, you know, public meetings that were very well attended, you know, uh, here in the, in just our town hall, you know, auditorium. And it was amazing what we learned from talking to people. Because, you know, you, you hear both sides. You hear people say, hey, listen, I'm just making ends meet, paying an additional $100 every three months for water. That ain't going to cut it for me. And then other people saying, you know, I've got babies, our water's brown, you know? Like this, we, we need to do something or, you know, we have our septic tank pumped out every three months, you know? So what do those people do? They go and spend $15,000 and they redo their septic system, you know, when they buy the house. And then before they go sell that house to the next young family, those people have to do it again. This is just kind of a never ending thing. But public, uh, working with the public of, of Clinton was, was actually really, it was really gratifying. It was eye opening. We learned a lot of information that ended up in the plan. And, um, where it ended was not being able to answer a couple of those questions. And that's, so I get the emails from Mary saying, Clinton events, Matt, we need your new story. We need this, we need this, and I don't have a new story. So I've, you know, the town has been kind of starved for, for new information. Paper does a great job of coming, coming to meetings and contacting us, what's coming, what's new? What are you working on next? But I haven't had a lot of new news, so I think working together, we can probably figure out, you know, what is doable, you know? What, what should we actually be putting our effort into? You know, we're all, this isn't a full, isn't a full-time job for most of us. So it's, it's having to fit into our busy lives. How can we figure out how to move this thing forward? But involving the whole town is the only way to do it. Yeah, because otherwise it gets seen for something that it isn't. And it's probably the kind of stuff that you hear, Chris, is why should I have to pay for, you know, a mansion on the shore? Or, hey, I'm, I retired here. Why should I pay for somebody who made a mistake of buying a house with a problem? You know, we've heard all these arguments throughout the years and they're all, you know, they're all emotional things. They're, they're not really based in the reality is that, you know, the people who live in these areas, it's us. These aren't them, this, this is us. We live in the big beautiful houses, we live in the little houses. You know, this is, this is, it's all of us, you know? It's not a, it's not something that doesn't affect everybody in town.
So that doesn't become, um, well, it has been a huge task for you over the decade and before, I can't remember when Hal started. It needs to move along and I don't know what role your expectation of the council is at this point. I know you, you talked about process. It seems as though we need to take more ownership of the process and engagement with you because you need direction, um, you need support, um, you can't continue. I can't see, I don't know how you're doing it as volunteers, the amount of time you're, you're putting in there.
You can't, you can't build roads and bridges with a, you know, with an $80,000 budget.
And a volunteer committee.
And volunteers, yeah.
I, I absolutely recognize that. So, um, something to think about how the council needs to start taking some ownership of the role and, and the whole process is, is definitely, um, you know, and whether or not, you know, transitioning leadership of the project needs to move along before we get to some of those areas. Maybe that makes sense as well. We do have staff, we have, um, people who are here full time, so perhaps that's part of it.
We're a huge resource to the town and, you know, the, the, uh, the, the work that our engineers have, have done, you know, we, we've been really lucky. You know, we've talked to many different engineering firms throughout the years and we've stayed with CDM Smith. They were vetted, um, by the town originally and we've, we've stayed with them because we've been lucky that we have somebody who's kind of responsive to our, to our types of needs as a small town. You know, not trying to solve our problems with, you know, a New Haven or Hartford type of solution. You know, those are billion dollar projects, you know? So we've, we've been lucky and have respect. And so we're a resource, you know, to you guys and we're the resident experts, you know? But how, how we keep this conversation going forward is, is, is really up to, you know, leadership.
I mean, we need you. I mean, you're the smart ones as it relates to this. We're council members, like, I mean, you know, we need to be educated just as much. So a collaboration, yes. Ownership, I, I don't think anybody here can say we would want ownership of this because what, what would we do with it? Because we don't have the professionals that can give us the information that we need. We can be beneficial to you, obviously, as we go forward, making sure, you know, how this is presented to the public. Obviously, there's going to be financing issues about what this is going to cost. I mean, so, I mean, that's, that's part of it. I mean, it's just an open dialogue that needs to continue to happen. You know, I mean, that's the bottom line. Like you say, if it's, you're going to continue to talk about it and have it be at the forefront, that's what we need then.
What we have found is the best way to do stuff is through workshopping. We, we developed a lot of this through workshopping. And it's tough in this type of forum to do workshop because you guys have business to take care of and it's, it's not, it's not that forum. But we're often able to, you know, modify our second meeting of the month to be a workshop type meeting where, um, nothing is a work product, nothing is really a, it's, it's, it can be a completely open dialogue where people can ask stupid questions. Because that's how, that's how things move forward in life is you ask stupid questions and that's how things move. Hey, we really need to do this or, hey, what happens if we don't do this? Or why don't we just put a big pipe? You know, that, all those questions can be had in a workshop type forum, which is my preference. It's kind of a record at this point how you'd, how you'd like to see us again or, you know?
Because we'll have dumb questions, trust me.
It's how we're regular people, all of us, right?
But I mean, that's the thing, like you say, if it's in an open environment where you can ask those questions where, you know, where you don't feel uncomfortable asking the question because we don't know. You know, and we do need to know. Because ultimately, if the council is the decision-making body for this, then we should be educated on that.
I came in as a bright eyed, um, you know, environmental scientist and joined the group and said, okay, well, I do this stuff every day, so we're going to figure this crap out. Here's how we're going to do it and it's going to go like this. And then I learned that, you know, I was-
Ten years later?
A little too overeagious, a little overeager. But, you know, the expertise is still here and people show up to these meetings and, you know, people care for all types of different reasons, you know?
Well, thank you.
I think it affects us all, you know?
I appreciate the information, obviously. It's, I think, very good for us to know it and the continued dialogue so that we're, you know, kept up to date on where we're going to go.
So in, in the absence of, of you guys giving us direction on, on how to, uh, how to, how to proceed with dialogue, at a minimum, we'd just like to have another one of these, at a minimum, and just kind of, uh, you know, work, work our way through a couple of the topics and have conversations. Another way to do that would be for, for all of you or a subset of you to come to one of our meetings and just do a complete open thing, you know, where we can ask really dumb questions. You know, because it's, you know, just a, it's a WPCC roll up your sleeves meeting.
They're not dumb questions, they're just not smart questions.
It's how, it's how science works. It's why I love science, is to ask dumb questions.
When's the load testing supposed to happen?
Late, late winter into spring of 2023. It has to be during high groundwater, fine.
If you're going to put something in the ground, you want to know how much room you have to put it in the ground and the groundwater fluctuates with the seasons and there's more of it in the ground during the spring. So that's the key, the key period. Yeah, that's the key period. So we will have a lot to do this fall, you know, just a few schedules. So we will have a lot to do this fall, you know, just a few scheduled meetings, but we'll, we'll get it all together and you guys can help us understand how ARPA funds work and, um, we'll, I have great engineering for a month, you know, that I think would be up to the task and, you know, we can, we can take it from there.
Good.
Another good, um, aspect of is the natural hazard mitigation plan does acknowledge it and does direct to some opportunity for funding, so that's a, a great step as well to acknowledge the work that you're doing.
I've, I've heard so many great ideas through the, through the years and many of them have come from this guy right here, because he pays attention to what's going on in the news and I just don't have the time to take on, on many projects, so, you know, that, that's the real challenge, is to work with the town on how do we take on these mini projects, to figure out, how does coastal resiliency help us pay for our project? How does Clean Water Fund help us pay for our project? How does the, you know, USDA or what other sources are out there? Um, I think Carl and I wanted more help from the Connecticut D E P than we got, um, so that's, we're still, still, that conversation needs to happen because, you know, we, we can't have them looking at us like this and, and just making more problems for us, they, they need to be part of the solution, I think we can demand that and we can use our representatives and senators and figure out a way to ram that home with them, but that's, that's how other towns have done it, you know. Guilford was successful with, um, with a water main project because they kind of rammed it home, you know, with their, with the state of Connecticut, um, leadership.
That was a little different though.
A little different, but, yeah, had some, had some
There was some influence there.
Similarities and it was supposed to actually help us out according to the water company, but that never happened, but that's a story for, thank you, folks.
Thank you, Matt, Al, thank you, Christie, thank you very much, guys. We're on now to item six, Charter Revision Commission Membership. Um, so tonight we've decided that we would be voting on the membership makeup of the Charter Revision Committee, um, we do have five members.
Five, honey?
Five members, the names, uh, that have been put forth are Mike Corniac, Dolly Mizetti, Minor Vincent, Jane Scully Welch, and Jerry Dunn.
What happened to Erdkeber?
Our, so we can only have ones, that one individual that's serving on a border commission or an elected official. And so Mike Corniac had originally given us his name and so that's why he
Okay, so Jane Welch and who?
Comments, questions?
Did Valerie and I, uh, apply?
No.
I tried.
I think you might have had a party affiliation situation there too.
Yeah, well, there's, uh, Jerry's a Democrat, right, Jerry, Dolly and Minor are all Democrats. So Minor, Mike Corniac's the only Republican and Jane's the only unaffiliated, I guess, so.
Make a motion that we accept the five names submitted for the Charter Revision Commission.
Second, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I'm abstaining.
On to item number seven, Small Town Economic Assistance Program Grant, so this is the steep grant that we talked about, that Carl talked about at the last meeting, obviously now we have a more of an update and a resolution to move forward, so.
Yeah, I need a resolution approved by the council to submit an application, both by Charter and, um, in keeping with the requirements for an application, um, I'm putting in at half a million dollars, which is the largest award possible. As I noted at the last meeting, there are two potential projects, one is continuing the, uh, continue, the, uh, radio communications project that has local match already allocated, uh, which would aid in our competitiveness, there is no permitting required and it's shovel ready or, or ready to go. The other project is replacing the carpet on the turf field at IROC, uh, there's a cost estimate, there would be no permitting required, local match needs to be identified because there is no match currently appropriated for that project. Uh, the delta to be appropriated is ninety-two thousand dollars, uh, to be the local match, which is not shooting for the percentage, the state said twenty percent would be a good match, that's just rounds out the project. Um, completed, it's five hundred and ninety-two, five hundred from steep, ninety-two from sources yet to be determined. So I'm looking for direction from the council on two things, first, to say, yes, you want the grant and then approve the resolution, and second, what am I writing? Radios or artificial turf replacement? And if it's artificial turf replacement, your next meeting has to approve the, uh, the ninety-two thousand dollars from a source Sue and I will have to figure out.
And can you just go over the radios again, how that was financed?
So that's the ongoing radio replacement project for the dispatch, uh, there's already money that's been set aside in the capital plan for the past two years, so we have match already available. And the project can be segmented into a discrete unit of work that fits within half a million dollars plus what we put in for match. So it's, it's more ready to go because the money is already in place in the capital plan.
And what is the total cost of that project?
Million dollars, right?
It's multiple million dollars, we don't have hard numbers because Motorola is not releasing some cost estimates and that seems to be problematic across everything that they're doing, because I'm hearing the exact same thing on estuary transit, that they're having problems getting a radio project moving based on lack of information coming out of Motorola as the manufacturer.
So in order to apply for radio communications, uh, to apply this money to radio communications, we also have to commit to multiple millions of dollars to complete the project?
Correct, and we, but our approach has been pay as you go, and we think that that, that is logical and makes sense rather than have all the money
Like a lease purchase, is that what you're saying?
No, pay as you go. We're gonna do specific elements, try and put those, build money into the budget in order to respond to those specific elements rather than
Okay.
Making an abundant project or looking for all that money all at once, we think we can do it over time with smaller bites of the apple.
All right.
And from what I understand, from the Indian River, from the artificial turf, when that was put in, it had, they said the shelf life on it was, say, I don't know the exact numbers, but say it was like ten years and they're already on thirteen years, so unless we scrapped that whole project, that's going to have to be replaced in the next couple of years. So if we don't do, if we don't use the steep grant for that, then it's gonna be taxpayer dollars that has to pay for that replacement unless, like I said, we just let that whole field go unused going forward.
Will this figure out as steep grant available next year?
Uh, I mean, I'm not sure I can comment on that, I mean, it's up to whoever the governor is.
Right.
It was always half a million dollars and it was always every year.
Governor Lamont stopped the program, we had the debt diet, then he brought it back
at maximum one hundred thirty-eight thousand, now we're back to half a million, I don't know whether it'll be half a million next year, I mean, I don't, I don't have that, my crystal balls isn't showing that.
So the radio project, I am, is, am I incorrect in thinking that the reason we have to do this is because what we have currently is becoming obsolete?
What we have currently is obsolete.
Okay.
It's no longer supported by the manufacturer.
Who was also Motorola?
Oh, good move, for Motorola.
Isn't it a public safety issue at this point, or does it become a public safety issue at some point?
It will become a public safety issue at some point in time. Handheld units will die out, they are no longer supported for replacements, we have relationships with other, uh, agencies where we could get hand, our hands on their hand-me-down units, but that should be a bridge, that should not be viewed as a permanent solution. The dispatch councils in and of themselves are no longer supported by Motorola.
It sounds as though public safety tends to tip the scales, especially in that circumstance and everything else.
I would also like to address Kerry's, um, question was that it's not very common for a town to get steep grants repeatedly in a short period of time. Uh, we were very lucky a few years ago and did get three, I think, in, uh, the space of six or seven years, but I don't think it's, I don't think you could assume that next year if we reapplied with a different project in mind that it would be considered. Am I often saying that?
It's not unusual to get, or in the, in the past, it was not unusual to get multiple steep grants.
Can you say a year?
No, it's only in one, in one year, so you've got a maximum cap of half a million dollars, so you do one project to that end. Um, to get one in the following year and the following year, that's not unusual, uh, I did that when I was at North Branford, secured multiple steep grants year after year for different projects. Uh, it's really a function of what are the rules that get wrapped around the program? It's not statutory, just as it shall be one, so the rules that are currently wrapped around the project are different than what they used to be in the past. So before, the match could be soft match where it was income work or something of that nature. Now it is hard match, they wanna see town dollars in it, not ARPA money, but town, town, town bucks.
Shovel ready.
Shovel ready because they wanna see things happen, so you can't, it's not gonna pay for planning, it's not gonna pay for something that needs permitting, it's gotta be this ready to go type stuff. So the ready to go, that doesn't involve permitting, these two projects perk up to the top, one has match already appropriated, the other would have to find the match, it's just a matter of preference and direction in terms of where the council wants to go.
What about, so, um, for the radio project, um, would there be another type of grant or another type of thing that came along besides a steep grant that could be, that, that, uh, that that type of project could be used for? Because I think the turf project is, there's, there's not gonna be a lot of other types of grants or, or things that you would be able to use that for.
Uh, for the radio project, you know, again, we'd be looking at putting more money in the town budget, so you're back to the taxpayer picking up some of it. Um, you could appropriate more ARPA against it, which is what we already did with the first tranche, um, so that would be three hundred thousand, that's really it, there's maybe a firefighter program that could pay for some of the firefighter subscriber units, but that's not a certainty.
Can we allocate more money from the second tranche of ARPA funding for communications?
Three hundred thousand.
Are you saying you've already allocated three hundred thousand?
I'm not allocating anything, it's our meeting has to allocate.
Okay, but, but that three hundred thousand question that you had, um, we could allocate three hundred thousand.
We would have to go through a process, just like we did for the first tranche.
And we have to go through that anyway, right? Yeah. What is the deadline though, but that would be concerning about the deadline?
Uh, I need, I need to know tonight because it's due the middle of April, or the middle of August, so if I have to come up with match of ninety-two thousand, Sue and I have to figure out where that's coming from, so that you can
If it's the turf.
If it's the turf, so you can appropriate that at the first meeting in August, I will spend time writing it, the money would be, be in place prior to application, so we'd be good to go. So I, I kinda need a decision tonight. This is why I put it out at the last meeting of looking for direction.
Um, I'll make a motion to move forward on the radios due to
We gotta make a motion for a resolution first, don't we?
I'm sorry, well, we have to, oh, not, we have to accept the resolution first, so accept the resolution and, uh, second would be move forward on the radios.
Second, yeah. So you go to this one motion, Carrie? Except the resolution.
Accept it and
It's listed as one, one item on the agenda.
Yeah. The agenda item is just the authorizing resolution, so doesn't matter, I mean, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
So what's the second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained?
All righty.
We will now move on to item number eight, which is the Emergency Management Homeland Security Authorizing Resolution.
Uh, so this is an annual event, uh, we've acted on these every year now, this is part of the process of paperwork to make sure that the town can participate in any regional award of homeland security funds that will be divvied up, uh, to meet the needs of the region. The last major thing that was funded that benefited the town was two years ago, which was the light up directional sign, uh, we have one along with other towns in the region, uh, so this opens that door to us being able to access homeland security funds, which are not distributed locally, they are distributed at a regional level.
All right, so we'll look for a motion to approve
Move the resolution.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in
Sorry, I just had a question on the region two coordinator, have we gotten a coordinator yet?
Jake has, Jake has moved on, um, I'm not sure whether the interim has been made permanent yet. If, if you need that interim.
I was just curious, because I know Jake had left and I was a little concerned.
Yeah, no, there, there is an interim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number nine, line item transfers, we have three transfers tonight. First is communications, uh, increase salaries part-time by twenty-eight fifty-nine fifty-eight and decrease training, general supplies, clothing allowance and other equipment. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Does this remove that overhead that we see on the budget?
All three of these
Yeah, go ahead.
All three of these transfers that she put in to cover his over just in communication.
Okay.
I'll speak to them.
Gotcha.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Second one is for twenty thousand two eighty seventy-two for overtime coming from salaries full-time, holiday pay, service contracts, radios, radar and siren. Motion to approve?
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Lastly, again, communications, where we are increasing overtime for communications by twenty-nine thousand eight two seven ten and decreasing overtime for police. Motion to approve? A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I, so you can move between departments, this is moving from police to communications?
Yes.
Um, but I, this, I should probably have this conversation with Sue, because looking at their budgets, so this is for overtime salaries in the P D?
No.
No, communications.
Overtime and dispatch to be funded by
In, in communications.
Yes.
Okay. Ah, never mind, okay, never mind, never mind, you're doing what you're doing, I don't, but
Anyone else?
It's not new.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, thank you. Next up, Sue, Finance Director's Report.
Okay, June, the month of June, uh, the revenues were two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, most of that was because of this remaining state grant we received, which was a grant from Union Projects, and then town service revenues were twenty-six thousand, so revenues, that was it for the month. Expenses were six point eight million, five point one of it was transferred to the Board of Ed, there were three town payrolls in June, that was the remaining, basically the difference, and then also the recurring charges. Year to date, June, um, on a prelim basis, revenues in total are fifty-seven point eight million, right now, there are about one point six million over budget, due mainly to one point two million of additional tax revenues, um, half a million of that is the current tax levy, two hundred thousand is for prior year, two hundred thousand is additional supply on a motor vehicle, and then about a hundred thousand of additional tax interest in lanes, so one point two for the tax revenues, four hundred and twenty thousand of additional town service revenues, that's further detailed report, that breakdown for the lodges, you know, comes from the town clerk's office, the rest of it was the building department, um, police contractual as well, as I've spoken to all year long. Um, grant revenues in total were a hundred thousand dollars over and that's because we received the unbudgeted FEMA funds as well as the body camera grant for the police, um, those offset the shortfalls in the special ed and ECS that I've brought to your attention before, so grant revenues were about a hundred thousand over. And then we had about another hundred thousand of other revenue, um, investment income was about thirty thousand additional, we received some additional distributions, um, from the WASAM trust of twenty thousand dollars, they had some forced distributions, um, from the trust, and then we had some workers' comp equity distributions. And then we had some workers' comp equity distributions that we didn't budget for. So those other items were about another 100,000. I do expect, this is a very prelim, we still have to do closing entries and other things. So I know that's going to reduce the taxes by about another 200,000. But I just wanted to give you a feel for where I think those are coming in. Right now, the current tax levy collections are about 99%. Expenses in total, they're a little bit harder at this point to do any forecasting on. I can say that the reports show that they're 56.6 million. There are still $160,000 of outstanding encumbrances, meaning there are expenses that are still expected to come in, that people have reserved funds for. So I'm waiting for those invoices. I also expect about another half a million of accruals. And one of those is including an additional payroll accrual. So I can't give you a good estimate of expenses yet. I do expect a favorable variance, but the numbers are just too unknown at this point. We are still collecting invoices and encumbrances. Will need to be closed by August 15th. So I hope to have some good line item transfers for you at that point. So I hopefully should have some better numbers then. Individual departments that we've spoken to before about being overruns, which was the police communications overtime. He did take care of the chief with those line item transfers for the overruns as of this report. But I do have additional accruals to make that he will need additional transfers. But he does have the funds available in his budget. He does expect to be returning funds back to the town. So I don't expect any transfers of contingency to cover the shortfalls in communications and police. Public Works as well, right now, their line item you'll see in reports, about $65,000 over for the diesel alone. But that as well, looks like it's going to be able to be covered by other line items within their department. There's other departments that are having overruns, which I've also brought to your attention earlier because of retirements, a significant amount that we've had, you know, throughout the year and the payout of accrued time. So certain departments won't be able to cover those overruns once I have the final payroll posted. And I will need transfers from contingency to cover those, I anticipate. Or from other departments that have overages because we've had unfilled positions. So I don't expect to have to use a lot of the 113,000 of contingency that's remaining. But again, fall very prelim at this point. Moving on to investments and other things, investment balance is 27.4 million, you have that detail. A portion of that, those funds are, we did have advanced tax collections, meaning people paid in June for their July taxes of $5 million. That happens every year, this was actually larger than usual. So those numbers are not reflected in the revenues because those numbers all get recorded in '23. But we did receive $5 million advance payments. Next week, well, actually this week, I think we're going to do this. Our debt payments are due August 1st. So we'll be making 2.7 million worth of debt payments. Okay, so that's due. Fund balance contingencies haven't changed. ARPA, you had that report. About 356,000 has been spent of the monies that have been appropriated. There have been other expenses that are coming through our office now. We're just waiting for some final paperwork to finish those processing. I think there's another six and another five and another four, I think I saw today. So, at, which I'll be updating that report. We do, we did hear this week from OPM that the second 1.9 million will be received the first week of August. Supposed to be here.
Just remind me where we are at that stage.
Are we at the plateau still? I can't, I haven't looked at the chart in a while, our graph, for where, when are we falling off?
I can't speak to that right now.
You have another couple of years before you.
Is it 2024? I can't remember where.
We took the, we shaved the top off with the last two refinancings, but I think we're still got another year or two hanging out there before it starts to fall. We get on the other side, we believe.
Not very long.
Anyone else?
Yeah. July 1st, we got, we started with a new contingency. What would, what is that figure?
I don't remember. I'll have to get it.
Okay.
I'm so.
Did we allocate 170 or did we boost it to 250?
Did we lower?
It was the same as last year.
Same as last year, 170,000?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Alright, thank you, Sue. Item number 11, Council Discussions. Anybody have anything they would like to discuss?
I've got a couple of questions for Carl. Don't hold.
Well, oh, I think, I, I attended a placemakers meeting the other day and there was a large amount of time dedicated to the topic of Japanese knotweed in Clinton. And I had a conversation with, with Carl about this and how it's impacting real estate sales and.
Japanese what?
Look, what?
Japanese what?
This weed that is tenacious and almost impossible to kill. And it was, I mean, the conversation was pretty alarming, let me tell you. If you live near wild.
So the, the river cog, a couple of years ago, we did a study through.
I told them to go to the river cog because they want to create a united approach.
Nikki knows this already, yeah. She's got the information.
She acted like she hadn't heard it before, but anyway.
Conservation, our Conservation Commission already put together a pamphlet that's available on the website. It's getting publicized.
Well, she, yeah, but they want to get to work. They want to get to work on it. And they want to work on it as a unified basis with other towns. So, I don't know, she acted like she hadn't heard it before.
So the, the cog had the plan and they provided to Public Works as well. So I don't know, Public Works ever did a presentation, Conservation Commission.
It's, it's not a fire, people are not perceiving it as a fire that needs putting out at this point, so. But it is something that may become problematic in the future. It was just that I'd mentioned it. But, and I have another question. It's better ball. I like this, sauteable, butter.
He's a fountain of information, this guy.
He's putting butter in everything.
He was posting on our Facebook page.
Oh, he did. Did not know that.
You mentioned from a real estate standpoint, the insurance companies are starting to pay attention if you have knotweed on your property.
That's what they were saying, yeah.
Because it will destroy your foundation.
Yeah, exactly. Did you hear that? The Japanese knotweed can adversely impact your foundations.
It's like bamboo.
That's the big deal. But I have another question that I, I want to, I know it's premature. This would be a discussion for budget time. But I'm looking at that $607,000 that we hold aside for the Board of Education in case they run into any COVID-related exigent, you know, emergencies. We put this big chunk of money aside for them. And I am hoping that we can either modify or eliminate that in the budget coming up.
That was set up as a non-lapsing account to respond to any, and it's specific to escalating special ed expenses or capital. And it's been used for the past two years to provide for capital improvements.
It's still got its original balance.
No, it shouldn't.
$607,000, isn't that what we put aside?
That was the original appropriation, but you've dipped into that twice already.
Really? Because this, this is my argument.
We put both of us.
Because it reads $607,000, which is, I thought, what we put aside.
No, it's a separate fund, it's not a general fund. Is that the general?
607.
Yes.
Yeah, but you've dipped into that already.
So it shouldn't be 607.
No, you put in, you put in more than that. You've already hit it twice to pay for capital improvement projects.
I thought, I thought the amount we put aside was 607. So you're saying it's more than.
No, more than that, yeah. You've dipped into it twice to pay, to pay for budgets.
Is that three? I'm out, okay?
Alright, well, we gave you the opportunity.
Just kidding, every time I open my mouth, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm done. So given Matt's presentation, have you heard anything about infrastructure money ever trickling down to Clinton? How's that working out?
So infrastructure money is going to the states and then there's competitive. The state process and DRS Commissioner Mark Boutman wants, since he's the governor's lead for it, he wants regional projects to come together, he wants the COGS to coordinate that. The only cog that's actually staffed up is the Capitol Region Cog. None of the rest have provided staff to coordinate all this stuff together. So they're going to have to figure out how those projects get pulled together. The towns are supposed to apply or send their application materials to the cog. The cog would blend them together. So if it makes sense for every town asking for the same thing, they would make one big macro project. Coordinates with the state, the state says okay, then it works its way back down the food chain and you put in your application and you're supposed to go. The funding that went for clean water, I participated in a presentation that EPA did on how infrastructure money went to the states for clean water. I haven't heard what Connecticut is doing for clean water and how they're specifically going to earmark it, or whether they're going to increase the grant or buy down the interest rate on the loan part. That's, I haven't heard anything on that front.
Because that's the kind of thing that we could apply for part of those many projects he's talking about, right? Infrastructure is perfect for those, what he's talking about, whether it's rocky ledge.
It's just a matter of mechanical process by which the state wants to receive these things. We start to feed it in. As I noted a few meetings ago, when FEMA was charged with COVID recovery, I did flag those projects as part of our recovery. And FEMA is supposed to be giving us a roadmap for other places you can go for funding to pay for those things rather than what Matt was expressing his frustration of just sort of this vanilla response. If there's other pods we can go to to buy down the bonding piece, we should be preserving that.
Alright, great. Landfill, have you any word on that? I didn't see it in your manager's report, so that's why I wanted to ask.
Well, I was going to do it as a verbal, so.
Oh, okay, so you're going to talk about that.
You want me to answer now? I can answer now.
No, that's alright. Oh, wait, I'll be patient.
Patiently waiting.
And one more thing, well, two more things. Pearson update, anything with state attorney general? And anything about that signage?
Pearson, this council decided you wanted to have a workshop regarding potential uses and talking about costs. And I've been pulling together information to that end.
Okay.
So.
That's the good stuff.
You all are going to have to decide whether you want to do a workshop.
Okay.
And what was the other question, Pearson?
Signage, yeah.
Signage?
She just snuck that in there.
Signage.
I figured there was an easy answer for that.
Never. It hasn't changed. That's a step in this progress. John L. is coordinating the production of the signs.
Should we set up a workshop or is everybody too busy in August?
When do you think I'll have that info? Like, do you, that you're putting together? I mean, how much time do you need?
Drop everything. I have some of it already together. I need to put it into a fashion that makes sense for the council. Couple of weeks.
Okay. Do we want to do a workshop then in August?
Sure.
Good.
Yep.
You say you are saying that, well, we'll have it ready? Or do you need to bring that to the council first for discussion before you have? I wasn't understanding what you're saying about what you needed.
The council said they wanted to meet to talk about potential uses. I was putting together information on costs, which also.
I didn't hear the cost part, sorry.
Alright, so we pick a date in August?
Okay.
Alright, we'll send an email out then to everybody for August.
Great, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Nope, good. Chairman's report. So a couple of things. We got thank you letters for the two students that we gave scholarships to. So just want to let everybody know that they both did send scholarships. I attended the senior coordinator event that they had over at the library, which was unbelievable. I mean, honestly, the place packed, a lot of people. Christina thinks he's going to do an outstanding job. And so it went really well and it was good to hear from, you know, obviously there was a lot of seniors there expressing their, you know, opinions on what they'd like to see. So it went really well. So I think that's going to be a good start for us on the senior side. And, and then just obviously thank the placemakers for the event, the Beer and Food Festival. I don't know if who was there, it was ridiculous. It was a really good event, the place was packed, people from all over, it wasn't just Clinton. So kudos to them for all the hard work that they did putting that together. And that is all for me. Matt, Town Manager's Report.
So you had my written report and we addressed the question I had for the STEEP grant and ARPA funding according to OPM. By August 10th, those dollars should be transferred down to us from Treasury. So we'll need to go back through the process we went through last time, which was workshops, talking about projects, and then team things up for appropriation process with a town meeting to take place and a date to be determined. Senior Program Coordinator is making good connections and prepping to launch to offering programs. So there's been a lot of positive activity on her, her side. Town Engineering bid, it's been reviewed by Public Works, it's been reviewed by Land Use. And I've reviewed the bid proposals. We'll probably have a shortlist and interview a couple of firms to see whether there's a good fit with what we're looking for versus what their experience has been. Town Planner, AD, is out in the world. So it's been posted to the Connecticut Conference Municipalities website as well as the Connecticut branch of the American Planning Association. And we'll see what we get for applications in August for moving that forward. Landfill borrowings are supposed to be finished this week. So then the lab results and report will need to be compiled. Theoretically, the report could come in by the end of the month, which is, that's a milestone for go, no-go with the approach of importing soil on the property. So hopefully by the end of this month, we'll be at that no-go, go, no-go point, and it is a go. Ongoing coordination with Eric Bergman on sustainability or sustainable CT remains an ongoing activity.
That landfill, is that a vote for go or no-go? Or do they automatically go if it's a go?
It's a feasibility piece. So if it's feasible to go forward, then they would look for the town to say go. They don't have license to do whatever they want. We're controlled.
Engineer, are the engineers also bidding with the land use as well? Is it still joint?
It's everything. It's, it's everything. It's flip plane review, it's DPW, it's all Land Use stuff, it's in the wetlands. Everything is once go to work.
Anyone else? Thank you, Carl. Town Council Liaison, or Committee Liaison Reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
I, I've got Board of Ed update. The, the Building and Grounds Committees have met this summer. They're monitoring facility work and projects. They're hiring for a couple of positions. They've, this, the, the, let's see. They're, they're collaborating with two town committee and program collaborations, the Art and Mural Project and the, and Human Rights Committee. And five React students from Oregon are attending a conference in Florida to present student work in drug prevention. Summer school programs in full swing. And that does include free summer meals for students being provided with funding, provided to, to them from the Town Council, ARPA funding and families, helping families donations. And they did hire a new athletic director. It's a she. And she began working, I think, yesterday or a couple of days ago. Her name's Megan Sears. And she is coming most directly from Motville Public Schools, where she was the athletic director there. And prior to that role, she was a PE health teacher at HK for 10 years and was the department chairs, chairperson. And that's it.
Did you attend the meeting?
No.
I was just curious if they had any of the issues some of the surrounding towns have had.
With protesters?
Yeah, just things coming.
No, I, I just got the notes.
Anybody else?
Yeah. No one else? Police information met last week. Everything's moving along without any exciting things happening except for two things that I want to bring up. One is the traffic authority is going. One is the Traffic Authority is going to entertain a proposal to rearrange the intersection up by the Little Red Schoolhouse on Cow Hill Road. I guess there's been some talk about there's a lot of speeding, if you will, southbound on Cow Hill Road. So...
I have to agree with you.
I guess the proposal, and I believe it was drawn up by the chief, they talked it over with DPW, that as you come down Cow Hill Road, you'll notice that when you approach Airline Road, there's a little road to the right. They're referring to it as a shoe. They're going to close that off and let Cow Hill meet Airline, where Airline has the stop sign, and also put a stop sign on the southbound side of Cow Hill Road. The thought being there is, as people are coming down Cow Hill, they'll prepare and get in their mind that there's a stop sign there. There's no longer just a zip all the way down the hill, and that hopefully this will slow down some of the traffic. That seems to be the heaviest, from what individuals are saying. I guess they had their little machine up there too for a while. From Egypt, south, seems to be a good area of speed. So they're going to investigate it. They're going to look at it and see. And DPW guesses, working with the PD on implementing. The second thing is just, I thought, a very interesting note. The police department has not lost one day's work to injury in the last two years. Not one police officer has been out injured for the last two years. I think that's really something to the morale and whatever of the police department that's unheard of, I would think. I haven't heard that in a long time. So I just wanted to make mention of that. Thank you.
Next one. Tom?
Economic Development Commission met last week. There was limited attendance. And Bob, who was usually the monopolizer about the manufacturing, wasn't there, so the meeting was rather short. There was a discussion about bringing on a communications coordinator of a part-time job of one day a week. And I would imagine there's been discussions with Carl about hiring such a position. That's, I would, we have a lot of positions that are currently in the market. I would imagine this one eventually will happen, but there's other ones that seem to be a little...
I think it has to be asked for.
You were shaking your head no, Carl, or is that in?
That is not in the budget, and that has not been asked for, and there's been no conversation to that effect.
Good?
Done.
All right. Anybody else?
I went to PNC and everything was fine.
Good. All right. Here and done, then we will move on to item number 15. Adjourn to executive session pursuant to CGS 1-2068 for personnel. Invite Mary and Carl. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, we're back from executive session, and now we will move on to item number 16, which is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Thank you again, everyone.